I don't know how they differentiate it. I know that we've had two businesses not locate in Centerville and locate in Bountiful for the microblading, so I'm not sure how Bountiful does it. I'm just aware of other cities do create distinct definitions and for some reason our personal care reaches over and labels it into the tattoo parlor with any... And I think it's, you know, microblading is a very different technique. I'm not an expert. It's more of a semi-permanent, but under the definition of the profession, it's considered permanent ink. You know, tattooing itself is a different procedure. So, we do have cities that allow this, but they're not calling it under the tattoo establishment. They're calling it under the personal care.
That's what I'm also... My question for you, and maybe it's for the applicant too, is I've seen microblading establishments that do not allow people under the age of 16 or whatever, and that's consistent with a traditional tattoo establishment. I don't know, I mean, I didn't know if that specific place also did tattoos in addition to microblading, and that's why that sign was up, but do we know, would we have any kind of signage that would be required to be posted outside, or any kind of restrictions on that?
I think we'd ask the applicant, who's the professional in that procedure.
So, I have another question about this. This is, well, from my education, because I really don't know much about a lot of this. Is there licensing required for either? Obviously, I think there is licensing required for estheticians and cosmetologists, but is there specifically licensing required for microblading?
Yes.
Is there licensing required for general tattooing? Anybody know?
I don't know that.
We can save that for the applicant if the staff doesn't know.
Yeah, the tattooing itself is under the Health Department for their approval establishment, but for their services, I think the applicant answer where their professional certification stands in relation to that procedure.
Okay. Any other questions for staff before we invite the applicant to step forward? All right, let's go ahead and we'll invite the applicant to step forward and speak to this matter. And if you'll just introduce yourself for us, for the record.
Okay, I'm Taylor Davis, and I'm the owner of Taylor K. Browse. So, for the last three years, I've run a successful business in Farmington, and we have grown, so that's why I moved, I got another location in Centerville. And my hope is to fully transition from my Farmington location to the Centerville one. But because of all of this, I've had to do part of my business in Farmington and part of it in Centerville. So, yeah, I would like to have my business in Centerville City. I think there is a big difference between permanent cosmetics and tattoos. I've had the opportunity to work on hundreds of women, a lot of which have had cancer, alopecia, just different conditions that have caused them to lose their eyebrows. So, this is seriously has been like a life-changing service for a lot of these women, has just brought back confidence that they didn't have before, and I don't know, I just, I love my job because I get to make people happy. As far as licensing goes, we have to do, I mean, it is pretty loose, but they do license us the same as tattoo artists. So, you do have to take some sort of certification course, and then after that, it's usually about a five-day course, and then you have your license. But, and then after that, you have to have the Health Department come in. You do have to be certified in CPR and through bloodborne pathogens. So, we are very careful, and we're very instructed in the way that no contamination and keeping everything very sterile. I don't know...
Do you have to recertify?
You don't have to recertify. It's not required, but you do, I mean, every year you have to take the bloodborne pathogens. The Health Department comes in once a year and checks up on you. But as far as like certification goes, no.
So, the CPR, the bloodborne pathogens, those are related to that licensing that the tattoo artists do as well, or that's not the...
No, that's what they do as well. That's what the Health Department requires you.
So, that you wouldn't have to do that just as general cosmetologist or esthetician?
Not in Davis County.
Okay.
As a part of your licensing requirement or licensure, Commissioner Wright had raised an issue with regards to the age limitation. Is there an age limitation under which you can't tattoo?
Yes, well, so, the Health, I, so, I don't personally take anyone that's under the age of 18, and they have to show an ID. And I know, like, my insurance won't cover me if I take clients who are under the age of 18. So, and the Health Department, I can't remember what they had me do, but I think they made sure that none of my clients were under the age of 18 as well, and if they were, that they had parental consent. But I just don't even go there because insurance reasons.
So, have you post, do you have it posted? Are, like, are they still allowed in it? Is it considered like, do you have to post, like, this is considered a tattoo establishment?
I don't have anything like that posted, but my consent form does go over that and says this is a tattoo, and, you know, kind of goes over all of that.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I feel like there was, but I can't see anything.
Corey, didn't you say there was a question that we were hoping she'd field?
It was the certification.
Oh, okay.
So, there's been a question...
Because I knew that tattoos, there was a Health Department requirement. I don't know about microblading and so forth.
There's been a question, is it permanent, is it not, how permanent is it? What does permanent mean?
So, in Australia, actually, it's illegal for them to call it permanent because they do require yearly touch-ups, if not more than that. I mean, everyone's skin is different, so some people hold on to the pigment more than others, just like hair dye or anything like that. So, they call, the reason they call it permanent is because usually, even if it's been 10 years, there's some sort of evidence that there was something done at one point in time. But I have several clients who I did a couple of years ago, and they still come back to me for wax and tints. They don't want a touch-up, but there's, they're completely gone, and I can't see anything that I did before.
In this profession, does it go beyond eyebrows? I mean, are there other, are there other places on the face, are there places where this same procedure could be applied?
Yeah, so you can do your eyebrows, you can do like an eyeliner, and you can do lips.
But is it the same procedure, the same type of...
So, okay, microblading is a hand tool with a blade on it that's made up of little needles. And basically, you're just going into the very top layer of the skin and creating like little hair-like strokes. Then, we also have...
And you dip it in the pigment and then put it in?
Uh-huh. And then there are, I mean, there's different techniques you can do. Another one that I do is it's done with a machine, so very similar to a tattoo, but it's not going as deep, and it's just dusting on some pigment to make it look like makeup. So, that's kind of what they do with the eyes, and that's what they do with the lips as well. So, everything that's done is done to enhance what's already there or meant to be there. So, I don't feel like it's really self-expression like a tattoo is.
But your license incorporates that full scope. If somebody wants the lip treatment or the makeup treatment somewhere else, permanent makeup, you could do that.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I do, actually, one more question. So, the reason why I know a tiny bit about this is because on my production team for my play that I'm the director of, I have one woman who just recently got certified. And so, she had told me about, you have certain hours. Don't you have, like, however many hours, do you have to do, like...
It's, you don't, it's, nothing is actually required as far as hours go. It just kind of depends on who you pick to be your instructor and what their curriculum is.
Okay. But the health and safety is the real sort of thing that everyone has to...
Yeah, and then to, like, to get insurance, you have to have a certain number of hours. And I mean, it's not illegal to operate without insurance. It's just dumb, in my opinion.
Fantastic. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. This matter has been scheduled for a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and take the opportunity to open the public hearing and invite any member of the public who wishes to speak to this matter to come forward. Seeing no one come forward, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any further questions for staff? Any discussion?
Yeah, I think that, you know, one of the discussions that we had earlier, Lisa brought up about, you know, whether we're at risk one way or the other, brought up an interesting thought for me, and I think that maybe there's a good way to handle this one in terms of, if you're looking at it in the full scope of tattooing, you take a baby step or something. But let's help to identify and accentuate the difference between the cosmetic nature of this versus the artistic expression nature of the other. And so, here's an idea that I'd like to throw out, and if it's received favorably, we can refine it a little bit. But as part of the definition of permanent cosmetics, maybe identify specifically that this would be done by a licensed esthetician or cosmetologist to try and emphasize that this is something that is related to this type of business and not just, you know, general, right? Not to say that a tattoo artist who does the artistic expression type couldn't go and also become a licensed esthetician or cosmetologist, but that, you know, this is the point of it.
Just further defining it.
Yeah.
I will defer to Lisa. I don't think from my legal understanding that would make a difference, not based on the rationale that courts have excluded tattooing from the First Amendment, but that's my viewpoint.
Yeah, I probably agree with that, but...
There goes the attorney. He's always poo-pooing every idea you've got, right?
Would it hurt to add that?
Engineers making roads, you know?
Would it hurt to add that? Because I like the further definition.
I would have to go look up, I don't even know what those, I'd have to look up what those two terms are.
Well, I mean...
And what license they have to get. I mean, I'm a little concerned because in order for the applicant to do this procedure, she just said, "I have to have a tattoo license under the state of Utah." So, I think you're making a, trying to change a definition without a state, you know, the state already says it's a tattoo.
Sure. But what I'm saying is that we're trying to say that this is, this is really cosmetic-related, and so therefore in Centerville, yeah, the state's going to license it as a general tattoo. But in Centerville, we're going to say, yep, cosmetic-related, here's why we think it's cosmetic-related.
Well, and, it's not that we're trying to change that definition. They'd still, in order to do microblading, still require the tattoo certification. But then, for Centerville, we would say, "And you're also required to have an esthetician's license in order to do this procedure."
But what if somebody doesn't want to? I mean, why, why are you regulating that requirement? You know, if they just want to do this procedure, but they don't want to do, I guess, cut hair or other things?
You'd still be an esthetician, I think, right? Would it be? Maybe not.
Can we, there's a difference, yeah, can we, I would, I would move that we invite the applicant to come back up and answer some questions.
I don't think that's part of the public hearing. You can just do that, can't you?
Oh, can we?
The applicant can come and go to town.
Do you want to go ahead and step back up? It sounds like we have some more questions for us.
Here's one of the main questions on this, then, while you're walking up. Do you have to be a licensed esthetician in order to do microblading? And also, maybe help us understand the difference between esthetician, cosmetology, and what other things might be encompassed by some of those?
Okay. So, it's actually interesting that you say that. I think Doppel, which, who is, you know, they oversee all of the licenses and stuff. It is very interesting because I had to get my esthetician license to be able to wax, tweeze, trim even, somebody's eyebrows. But you don't have to have one to actually make incisions into their face. So, that is very interesting. But I've talked to Doppel several times. I've worked with them just because I am really interested to see if this is a law that passes. But they are afraid of it because they say that if they do that, then they're going to have to do that for tattoo artists as well. And tattoo artists, I don't know one tattoo artist that is an esthetician or a cosmetologist. Estheticians, you have to go, depends on what kind of esthetician you are. You have a basic esthetician license, which school is 600 hours for that. Or you have a master esthetician, who their school is 1,200 hours. And then, cosmetology is a basic esthetician plus hair. I don't know, what other, what other things can I clarify?
No, that's very helpful, and not at the same time, but that's not your fault.
It's helpful for us, no. It's not helpful for his, you know, suggestion.
Yeah, it's so tough, because I think it's kind of a weird, a weird thing. But I do think the argument can be made that if they can do body art on someone, why can't they do it on their face, assuming their training has covered the anatomy of the skin. They are doing everything sterile-y, you know. I mean, school, yes, estheticians learn a lot, but at the same time, they learn more by actually going out and doing things separately. So, I don't know. It's, I can see what you're saying, for sure.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. That was very helpful.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Pretty good.
All right. Any further discussion?
I don't think we should add that, Kevin.
Yeah, well, listen, it was a good idea, and then...
It was a good idea, I think.
The facts got in the way, I guess, but whatever.
If there's no further discussion, the chair will entertain a motion.
I hereby make a motion for the Planning Commission to recommend to the city council the following changes in zoning code 12.12 with the definitions made to personal care service, tattoo establishment, and adding the definition for permanent cosmetics as found in the staff report.
Second, who wants to claim the second?
Go ahead.
All right, Commissioner Hurst is claiming that one. I'm claiming it for Commissioner Hurst. Any, it's been, if not, let's start at your end. Commissioner Wright?
Aye.
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 Right, it passes, which means now it goes up to the city council. So, we just made a recommendation for the city council to approve it, but they're the ones who will ultimately make that legislative determination.
Chair Heyman, can I address the applicant?
Absolutely.
Cassie is going to go back and put up a report to the, to the city council. You can contact the city recorder to know the agenda date, or once Cassie knows, she can give it to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You know, and one thing to add, I'd be open to exploring the possibility of remedying the legal risk by allowing tattoo parlors in the city. You know, I think that might be worth just looking at, period. I know Kevin's been aching to get one, so...
Yeah, I actually agree with that.
I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Yeah.
I think it's relatively unlikely that we're going to have a flood of tattoo parlors in Centerville, so...
And we can zone it to where it is appropriate for an establishment and address the risk before it occurs.
You know, Corey, since I seem to always tell you to add things to the list, can you please add to our list of items to discuss, or Cassie, since she's writing it down and you're not? Cassie, will you add to our to-do...
I've moved on. Cassie's staying with you.
Our to-do list to revisit this issue with regards to the ban on tattoo parlors in, in Centerville.
Maybe even consider slightly exploring that concept with the city council when this comes up, you know?
Yeah.
Maybe just say, you know, is that something you'd like the commission to look at or not?
As part of the work session.
Well, let's see what they say when this comes up to them.
Yeah, yeah.
Good point. At least just keep it on our radar. Remind me at some point that we need to circle back around on that. Okay, interesting discussion. Bet you guys did not think it was going to be that interesting tonight. All right, next item on the agenda. So, this is number three. We're asked to consider the proposed conditional use permit for car sales for motoring financial LLC sensible rides, which is located at 707 North, 1,000 West, Suite 4. So, we'll go ahead and turn the time over to staff.
Thank you, Chair Heyman. I'll make the presentation to you. As you probably read in your, in your submittals from the applicant in the staff report, Extreme Auto provides a vehicle repair service. Understanding from their application, they do have some loan cars that they give out to clients as they repair their vehicles. Also, during the assessment of a collision, there might be a situation where the car reaches a value too high to repair for its current value, so it goes into a totaled category. And depending on the discussions with the insurance company, the repair facility, there's opportunities to have some payout. And what Extreme Auto, from what I understand, is, is there might be an opportunity that some of their loaner cars and things that they have on site that they keep could be sold to individuals as a replacement vehicle for the one that was categorized unrepairable, at least for the extent of the insurance company. Under the state of Utah, to sell cars, X number of cars can be sold in a private manner per year. I don't remember what it was. I don't know if it's three vehicles a year or three vehicles over three years, but there's a limit that you could just buy and sell cars on your own without being, constituting a dealer. Under a dealership license, as I understand it, you're required to apply for the state to be a dealer. You have to have a location under the state licensing and posting of the dealer license, and you're also required to have a set number of minimum display stalls for a dealer. I think it's three, if I recall correctly, and the applicant can address that. As you see in their application, they want to add that as an accessory business to be able to sell these cars. It's not their primary mode of, of the business operation, but it gives them an accessory opportunity. Under our definitions of accessory and primary uses, the procedures are the same if it falls under a conditional use. So, they have to follow the conditional use process to obtain rights to sell a, the cars in Centerville City. As you're aware, the idea of a CUP is it's allowable use, provided that you can assess any problems that needs to be mitigated with the, with the proposed use. And if the solutions are available and can be mitigated, we're obligated to approve the use for a petitioner. I bring up an interesting discussion in our staff report. This is something that you're dealing with. Also, later tonight, you've dealt in a couple of previous times when we're dealing with projects that were built as flex space. It's predominantly in a situation where flex space is a small office with a warehouse area. So, parking calculations are calculated against the office and then the warehouse. Warehouse is a very low rate, one per thousand. Office is one per 200, I think it is, five per thousand for an office area. Often, what you see happens in these flex space areas, tenants come and go. They're predominantly usually as a seed bed for small companies to get going. But you're seeing more and more opportunities for rent rates and so forth for other clients to come in. In the 90s, when this project area was approved, it was a office warehouse project. We looked at the 90s approvals, and they had 65 stalls for all four suites in the project. That averages somewhere just over 16 stalls per suite. If you look at Extreme Auto in their submittal, you see that they use a lot more stalls for their business, where they label that Extreme Auto parking is occurring. And you can see that our current ordinances today that are in place after Extreme Auto was in the facility would require nearly 50%. So, you would, you'd be nearly 28-something. We round to the nearest whole, so you'd be 29 stalls for the auto repair. And then, when you're looking at display, the assumption is there's a display area, and you're looking at, for every 10 displayed cars, there's one patron stall. So, Extreme Auto would be required today if they were to come in to have 30 stalls available to them. What you see in their application is that they don't have a separate display area. They're looking to encumber three of their own parking stalls to display the cars in. As you look at a CUP and considering impact, staff was unable to, since Extreme Auto is substantially using a, a big portion of the available parking, what are the other uses within the, in the building occurring? And how much parking, does our required parking is for those uses versus how much parking is needed for, maybe, maybe different numbers? But it's the issue of impact. We couldn't, in our, in my staff's mind, approve a CUP, taking up three stalls, even though it's only three stalls. We wouldn't find it appropriate that if that underparks the other uses according to our requirements, then we have a conflict that needs to be mitigated. Because we would not want another business to come back into the city and claim that we're approving something that's taking up their parking, and you've expanded a use to take up their parking. There would be a concern that we're not mitigating the property owners within the project. Staff doesn't really see a problem with outside the project until you see that there's insufficient parking, and they start choosing other places in other businesses to park. And so, we couldn't look at it at face value and say, "Hey, it's only three stalls. Go ahead and prove it because we don't have the findings that we're not impacting somebody." So, our, we provided you two recommendations to the project. The first one would be is table it. Go back, assess the other three units, the parking counts, the required counts, and see if we can find out if there's sufficient parking for the site for all four suites that are occurring in the development. If there is, then you can have the discussion of whether the, the Extreme Auto patron parking and the display parking is something that, that would be okay. The other thing that we, we as staff looked at is an opportunity that we think is an accessory use. You're not having a lot of impact. And so, the issue would be is, you do have, you see on the right-hand side, there are cars parked in unofficially slotted parking stalls, according to the site plan. That might be parking that could be added to the project with the official approval to stripe it. It also could be areas that could function as the three stalls. So, what we took from our second recommendation to you is, if they're willing to, if the applicant's willing to, is the display, if it's in an area that's not encumbering parking, so it can't be claimed that you're affecting someone else's parking in the project, and it doesn't get in the way of a circulation lane, that's the idea of making sure we have enough room on that east side, could, if they can prove to the zoning administrator that there's available three-slot stalls there, then the display area is tied to that, not to the parking, and let the zoning administrator approve it from that standpoint as part of finalizing the CUP. And we also included in there that if some disputes arise between what the zoning administrator is looking at and approving versus what the applicant desires, it would return back to the Planning Commission for resolution because it's really the Planning Commission issuing the permit, not the zoning administrator. So, it's, 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 it's one of those where we couldn't definitively say we're ready. We saw an alternative, but we did not have a discussion with the applicant with the alternative. So, I think that's something you can have, is what's the preferred route, or what's, what route are you comfortable most pursuing with the applicant as you consider approving it. So, that's our recommendation to you.
Thanks, Corey. Any questions for staff?
Corey, you mentioned that those parking, as shown on the screen up there on the far right, was not slated on the original site plan. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, is it against, I mean, is it, I don't know if illegal's the right word, but is it in violation for them to park?
No, it's excess area unless it doesn't, unless there's not enough circulation lane. Because you're not changing the site. The site was approved this way.
Yeah, okay.
And so, we are, we are honoring the approval that's in place, but instead of having excess asphalt that's used for some default parking, you could dedicate some of that excess asphalt for the display area.
And then you wouldn't have to go back and reassess?
Then you would not have to go back.
You could say, "You got space here." Just say, "That's one, two, three spots for, for display parking, and you're, you're fine and clear."
Right. And then we're not changing the site, and we're not evaluating that we're impacting somebody else's parking capability.
Thanks.
Any other questions for staff?
Can you explain, the four suites, the four businesses, are they all under one ownership group, or are they four different owners, or...
I think the property's under one ownership. I'm not positive, but I think it's under one ownership, and then their suites leased out. But I believe the owners here that could answer that.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? If not, we'll invite the applicant to step forward, speak to this matter. If you'll just introduce yourself for us.
Yeah, my name is Justin Manning, and I'm the owner of Extreme Auto Service and the applicant for this. And so, I've been in business since 1999 over there with Extreme Auto. So, my, the landlord does own the whole property, both of the buildings and all four suites. And so, you've got about 14,000 square feet in each one of those buildings, and I'm in just a little less than 50% of that. And so, my agreement with the landlord is all center parking is for my use. And the, the recommended three stalls, which is state recommended, or state minimum that you have to have three display stalls, I have in one of the, right in front of one of the units that we are leasing at this point. And so, the, the cars that will be, that we use currently for loaner cars for our clientele are in that parking system right now. And so, we're really not going to be taking really any more parking up, other than we will be rolling those cars so we can continue to improve, improve the, our fleet for our clients. So, anyway, so I've gone through the full process with the state, have my dealer's license, and have everything else. So, this is the last piece as far as just having the approval to, to operate this business or not a repair, or auto sells business within my current area.
What do you think of staff's suggestion to use that east side? What do you think of staff's suggestion to use that east side and like using that sort of excess space as your stall displays?
It really doesn't matter to me. You know, I had to designate three stalls where I had to put the sign for the state. But other than that, for me, I'd be fine with whatever because it's, I'm not, I'm not a traditional dealership. We're not going to be displaying cars and, and doing that. And so, yeah, that's not even really relevant to, so yeah, I'm fine with whatever.
Did you say that you use half of one of the four suites or half of the entire property?
So I, so I'm in, I'm in eighteen hundred square feet on the south building and then I'm in ten thousand five hundred square feet in the north building.
So your business speaks for almost half the square footage of that whole property?
Correct, yes.
And as part of your lease, you're saying the landlord said that whole middle strip is.
Correct. So any tenants that go into this space, their parking is in front of their, their units that they're designated. So all, so they're all made aware of the agreement that I have.
Does your licensing with the state allow you to grow larger than three stalls or three cars?
So the state requirement, so that we have to do, we have to just report all sales. We've just got to go through that process. The staff has mentioned that you, they just have a minimum requirement and you, and you can only sell three vehicles per year privately. So any one of us or as Extreme Auto, I can only sell three under Extreme Auto's name without being in violation of the law. So to get a dealer's license mitigates that, that out of that equation so that we would be able to, to legally sell cars that way through the state. And so, I mean, it is kind of a pain to have to go this whole route to be able to do that, but doing things the right way is what we're after, so.
So you, so you will have a license?
We do have a license currently.
So you can sell more than three?
Correct.
So there's, there exists a possibility that you're going to need more than three stalls?
So the answer is because the use of the vehicles, it's not traditional, hey, I'm going to, you know, get fifty cars so that I can have them sitting around. I don't have the space for that because I have approximately twenty-five-ish cars coming through a day through my business. And so everything is rotating, revolving. We've currently got twelve loaner cars right now and they're frequently being used, so they're not on the ground at that point. But the intent is that all of our loaner cars will be for sale and as staff had mentioned, that if the car's not repairable, well, we do have cars and then we're backing those cars and have a vehicle that they could purchase from us.
See, I'm just trying to understand.
No, you're fine, yeah.
You have, you have twelve cars that are coming in and out?
Yes.
And they're all for sale?
So at this point, they're not.
Oh, okay.
Because I can only sell three cars a year on mine. And so, so technically they're not, occasionally we do sell one because we see a need and we feel the need at that point. So, so again, not, it's not, not a traditional dealership setup where we, you know, are going to take all that parking and display cars for sale and create a dealership. So it is different in that, in that light.
So I think the discussion of the, to the applicant would be is if, if three is being requested, are you willing to stay at three unless amended?
That, that is what I'm trying to understand.
Okay. Three's, three's the requirement that the state, that the state says you need, and it just keeps people from selling cars out of their home. They call them curb stoners where they're just, you know, not getting a license and they're doing all of these things. And so the laws were put into place to mitigate that. And so the requirement is certain signage and the requirement is three display stalls from the state.
So we're considering capping you at three? And if you violate that, because Cory goes out and counts, I think at six o'clock in the morning and at six o'clock in the night.
If I get a complaint.
Are you okay if, if as a part of our approval, we capped you at three and if you wanted to go above that, like if you wanted to?
That's fine, because they're all my loaner cars anyway and so they're, they would be claimed as my loaner cars versus cars that are owned by the dealership and for sale.
Okay.
So it sounds like you're fine with option two in the staff report.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
I, I just want to clarify, just to, just to better understand this. So you have Extreme Auto, which is an auto repair company?
Correct.
And then this other company is the, the dealership?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. This matter has been scheduled for a public hearing, so we'll take the opportunity to open the public hearing and invite any member of the public who wishes to speak to this matter to step forward. Seeing no one step forward, we'll close the public hearing. Any further questions for staff?
Cory, option two, or is the option that would designate three spots on that eastern edge, right? What's the process if that's the case?
I, I believe I wrote in it, it's been a little bit since I wrote the report, that they would submit that to staff and we would be looking at that prior to the issuance of the business license.
And you'd make sure that there's circulation?
Yeah.
And that's kind of the analysis?
We would measure the circulation, make sure it's there. And then if somehow we said, okay, this is where it is and they disagreed with it, they could come back to the commission and solve that.
I'm comfortable.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Further discussion or debate? If not, the chair will entertain a motion.
Chair, I hereby make a motion for the planning commission to approve the conditional use permit request for Sensible Rides Auto Sales at seven oh seven North, Thousand West, Suite Four, subject to the conditions one through six. This is in option two of the staff report with the suggested reasons for the actions, or for the action A through F as found under option two of the staff report.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or debate?
Two minor things on the, on the motion. Number four, the display area shall not encumber, isn't that encumber with an E?
Yeah.
Okay. And then suggestion reasons for action number C, the planning commission finds that the primary use of suite number four is existing vehicle repair business.
I'll reluctantly accept those friendly hints. Great, thank you.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded as slightly revised by Commissioner Daley. Any, any further discussion or debate? If not, we'll start with you, Commissioner Daley.
Aye.
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 Great, it passes. Thank you very much. All right. Moving right along, next item up on our agenda, item number four. We are being asked to consider the proposed parking modification for the five-suite Mission Building located eight oh three North, twelve fifty West. And we will again turn time over to staff.
All right, thank you. So Mr. Craig Salmon owns a building that he refers to as the Mission Building, which has five pretty equally sized suites within it. Within the past few months, he's gotten some new tenants and over doing the TI finishes and stuff like that, we've realized that his new tenants are a little bit more intensive use than his previous ones. And so the parking calculation is adding up much higher than his parking that is striped currently at this location. So he is asking for a parking modification based on differing hours of operations for all of the businesses here. I've labeled the code for each of the uses, so for each of the suites. So there's two dance studios, one retail, a batting cage, which is classified as indoor entertainment in our code, and another office warehouse. A little bit thing that's confusing, the, most of our parking is calculated on square footage, but for dance, which is personal instruction, it's calculated based on the maximum occupancy based on the fire code of that suite. And then also in addition, which I think is kind of weird, also include, has to add the highest number of employees per shift. So that is, that was kind of getting mixed up in our applicant's site plan. So as you can see on the table, just the straight calculation of all those uses combined, they would need a hundred and twelve, a hundred and thirteen parking stalls. Suites number one and suites number five, which is the retail and the office warehouse, operate during normal business hours, like eight to five. And then the batting cages and the two dance places, and dance and the fitness place are five PM to ten and on weekends. So the, actually, it's the heavy lifting of the parking calculation is actually after five because of those three highest calculation abuses. And then during the day, it's only those two lighter uses that are, the parking lots being used. So the applicant states that based on the site plan provided here, he can stripe another row in the current parking lot that is most often used. And then there's some parking, there's some area behind the building where he can put in quite a few more stalls, where he can get to ninety-two stalls. And so based on the date, the hours of use for all these five suites, there's not going to be more than ninety-two stalls needed per the time of use. Are we all good? So he did provide some pictures, but I, I was reluctant to even send the pictures that he sent because they were during like the Christmas, New Year holiday season. And I feel like that's not a true accurate portrayal of what will happen there. I think the busiest time is going to be around like five o'clock when the retail people are leaving and the dance and the fitness people are coming, so there might be some traffic. But I think that the context of the businesses in general are also a little bit over calculated. I don't think, the backstage performance has been there for a long time and the applicant insists that they do not need forty parking stalls at all. You know, the Kairos is a, is a new place, as is the batting cage is, so it's hard to calculate if their true use is going to be more or less. But so far, it hasn't been a problem. There is, because this is after five, that the heaviest use would come into play, there is, you know, available street parking, that's, that's kind of like a dead area around that time anyway, so I don't think it would cause any major traffic problems in that area. But the applicant also argues that the true use and the true parking count of these suites has really never been an issue so far, four of them being there already, so. Our recommendation is as long as the hours of use of the suites that are in business hours doesn't exceed ninety-two, then we can move forward with the parking modification. The tricky part is that when new tenants come in, you know, they might have a different use and a much higher or lower calculation. So that's why as long as the hours of use that we'll be looking at in the future still meets the stalls painted. Any questions?
This conditional use application was caught because of a TI submittal, is that what I understood?
Yes.
Meaning?
If we don't get a TI submittal in the future, we might not catch a future change in use?
Oh, there would be a new business license.
Oh, okay.
So did any of the pictures show nighttime parking situation?
Yeah, they didn't.
Because I personally drive by there twice a week and it's quite busy at night. And I've personally been to a performance at the Backstage where I parked quite, quite a bit away because their parking was all full. And I asked how often they have performances down there at Backstage and it's at least quarterly. So I think that's something that we need to take into consideration is how often those recitals or performances are being held. Because at that point, there were people spilling out of the, the actual room into like the hallway just standing to watch the performance, let alone parking. So that, that's a different, that's a higher use than what is listed here. And it's also more frequent than what is listed here as well.
Sure. The way that the parking is striped now is going to be different in the future. So right now, the, the other side of the aisle is parallel parking and right now, and then in the future it'll be, you know, normal parking. So there's going to be adding quite a few more stalls just in that aisle, in that main parking aisle as well. Was the parking in the back open and available during those recitals? Do you remember?
I just know it was all.
Because there's two entrances to the building.
Full.
Yeah, so it does feel almost like two different parking lots.
Yeah. My, my question is, is what's the space from the existing parking to what would be striped? Because were they originally striped sideways because there's not enough turnaround space or is there enough space?
If you look on the drive aisle, they list their drive aisle.
What's our, do we have a required amount?
It's twenty-five and they are listing twenty-eight as the drive aisle.
And do we have a, a required stall length?
Yeah, eighteen feet.
Okay.
So yeah, the.
Yeah, they look like they're meeting our dimensionals.
Yeah, the, I am sure the recitals will be maybe an issue. Mr. Salmon has indicated that the two businesses right now are just kind of organically scheduling each other alternatively. So hopefully that continues to happen with any future tenants as well.
Are there signs directing people to the other side, to park on the other side?
Not that I know of, and it's also not striped yet.
Okay. No, I mean on the north side?
Yeah, it, yeah.
That one's not striped yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not striped yet.
You mentioned that the two new businesses are the batting cages and the Kairos?
Uh huh. And Backstage Performance used to be under another name, but the nature of it is the same.
I would suspect that except for recitals, you probably, I bet they're right, that they don't need anywhere near forty stalls. Usually it, my experience as a dance mom, you know, you drop your kid off on the way and you don't actually stay, right? It's, it's a, get out of the car quick, go, go, okay, see you later. So, and with regard to the recitals, it is an interesting question because if they were a standalone space, they would only be required to have forty-two parking stalls period, right? I mean, and so.
About, yeah.
Yeah, and here they're going to have the spillover from the other uses, so I'm comfortable with it.
I also asked instructor at Kairos how the parking is for them and they said it's quite difficult currently to find a parking lot, parking spot at night and that when they leave frequently, there'll be one or two left at the end of the night when it's later at night. So I think that's a pretty busy, busy place as well.
I think the other question I have too is they're saying it starts at five. Does it start at five? A lot of dance classes, dance studios are starting at four.
Yeah.
I mean, when we talk about that it's going to be busy right at five, is it going to be really busy right at five plus there's going to be a lot of people trying to get in there at four?
Well, I don't, I think the issue is that the regular business hours are five, then after that, the other businesses will be operating. I don't think it's starting, I think it's, other businesses are closed by five and the other businesses are still open for the dance night and recital. Their dance class may start at six thirty, but.
Yeah, but Gina's saying.
They're trying to argue that after five.
There's going to be more cars in there at four o'clock probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's saying, don't start it at five o'clock to ten PM, start it at four o'clock to ten PM because there's the, that overlap that's going to occur.
I agree with Shay Lynn. I think that it's likely that it's what, exactly what she's saying, you're dropping your kids off and leaving and not necessarily staying, which does not require a stall.
Right.
I just, I'm wondering how congested it gets at five when, and if there's room for them to pull in and drop their kid off safely.
Yeah, that's actually the bigger question there is the circulation.
That's something I was going to get to.
Circulation is a bigger issue than parking probably.
So back when the office five, suite five was a tumbling business, there, it was impossible to even drop your child off and then turn around and get out of there because the circulation was not really, it wasn't feasible. So I don't know how this is going to affect that. The stalls on the south side would make it more difficult for anyone to really navigate dropping off and then going because there'd be just more people.
We don't, we don't have a standard for those type of uses. We don't have a turnaround standard, we don't have, all we have is our parking regulations. It meets all our parking regulations, whether it's configured appropriately for people to drop off kids, turn around and go back. I would say probably not. That's going to be something that they'll have to control and figure out how, if, if that's a standard practice. But, you know, I think you'd have to say that creates an impact above and beyond our standard ordinance that you're trying to mitigate. But we're not asking, we're asking for a shared, we're not asking for a mitigation. And so, you know, I hesitate to say you have to reconfigure the site with a turnaround when there is no turnaround standards for any of this type of use, no stacking lane standards for these uses.
Well, I'm not saying to reconfigure for a turnaround, I'm just saying that's something we need to consider. And I also think Gina puts up a good point that, you know, if we're saying that this business starts at five o'clock, the evening businesses start at five o'clock, that's not accurate.
Yeah, but what I'm trying to say is, is it, let's just say you met the parking. You're not asking for shared. And they open up a dance studio and you meet the parking. You're under the same situation is all I'm trying to say. You're under the same situation is all I'm trying to say.
Are we meeting the parking?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
I didn't seem to me like we were meeting the parking.
No, 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 I'm taking, I'm trying to drop back, not now. Just say, let's say we just have, this is a dance studio, forty stalls, meet the parking in this configuration. Dropping off is not feasible. You're in the same parking lot configuration, that's all I'm trying to say. We don't have a standard that addresses that. This is just a shared use standard. And we're trying to say, okay, if you're going to go to a shared use, do you have enough in the off-hour peak to qualify under the standard of shared use? Then that's the argument being made to you. If it, if it creates a traffic congestion for people to drop off, they're going to figure out a different way to drop off. And the uses will have to try to figure out a different way to drop off. Because there's no, there's no standard for dance studios and dropping off kids and turning around and going out.
But there is a standard, starting at four o'clock, which we're starting it at five, and so that's a whole overlap.
No, I'm just talking about design standard.
Okay.
Just design standard.
I totally hear what you're saying, Corey. I guess in this case, I'd go, if they're starting to drop off at four o'clock and there's already a congestion issue in this area, it seems to me, and I agree, I think we're talking about congestion, maybe that doesn't apply to parking. But if, if parents can't even pull in and park to let their kids off safely, are we allowing something that's going to cause, you know, harm to a child running into a dance studio by kind of allowing something that's sort of a little bit less than what our standard is?
In this case, we're lucky that the prominent use is night, not the day. So nobody, during the day use, you know, by the time they're ready to go and things are going for the evening, I don't see much of a time conflict. So what you could do is push that to, you can't have the day, the evening use till six, if you're worried about that. But I don't see pushing that later, trying to protect the day use that's minimal for its parking. Because it's the night use in this case that's going to have its heavy parking.
Absolutely, and I agree with that. That's where I'm concerned, is mainly just at night. So I'm not concerned in the day. And I actually think that, you know, adding these stalls may, may actually make it totally feasible. But I am concerned that there is an overlap between day use and night use that occurs for a period of time that is going to exacerbate the problem to begin with. And then I'm also concerned, as Gina is, that the specific use of these, of these office studio spaces deals with kids quite a bit. And so having the safety of a lot of cars coming in and out, whether they're parking or not, just the fact that there needs to be a safe way for this to occur, it's kind of, it's kind of a big deal.
I don't disagree with you, but I think it's staying within the boundaries of your ordinance too, is what I'm trying to make an argument. Let's just say you had parking. In this configuration, no need for shared use. You would not be able to step in and say, "But you have to solve this problem."
Do they have parking?
About the forty-two and the single, the single location. I mean, I, you know, I don't know this area as well as you guys do, but it seems to me like if you can access that north parking lot and staff can access it, once they stripe it, that's a great place for staff to park, opens up some space. And if I were running this area here, based on the new way that they have configured the stalls, heck, I would, you know, put an entrance way in, like almost a one-way thing, right? You come in this side, you go out that side, and that's the way that the traffic flows and it would keep it just like a school drop-off location.
So that's one thing I was going to actually ask, is that's grass, right? That center thing?
The front strip, yeah.
So is there anything, I mean, I know that we probably have a, like a landscape requirement.
Ten percent.
But I'm wondering if there's anything we can do to mitigate or give an exception to that, to make it so that there is a pull-through? Because one thing that you probably pointed out is that people may not even recognize that the north side is even an option for them, right? And if they, A, recognize that the north side's an option, or B, recognize that they could pull through that situation and then-
I, I see your attempt, I don't disagree with your attempt, but I think it's out of the parameter of the request, is where I'm taking issue with it. If you're uncomfortable for these other various reasons to do the share, then deny the share and then they can listen to whether they want to go reconfigure their site. But I struggle, I struggle that you have the ability under the shared scenario to require further onsite improvements, is what I'm struggling with.
Yeah, I think that's a big challenge here, is that this is a straight up and down on the parking modification. We agree with this parking modification or we don't. This isn't a CUP where we can try and mitigate issues here and there and whatever else. So we either agree with this adjusted parking situation or we don't.
Yeah.
And I was just going to say, I agree with Corey that, I mean, our ordinances don't address that. And uses come and go, and these are private parking lots. And I don't think we, other than our circulation requirements and being required to back out in this scenario, unless like Commissioner Daley said, it was a CUP where we knew the specific use and that might be something where we would have the authority to require turnarounds.
Right. So if this, if this parking modification goes through, they stripe it and it's as is right here. If it doesn't go through, then do they have to go back and address the issue that they don't have enough parking? Okay.
And again, you don't have to approve the parking modification. That's what's before you. All I'm saying is, I think you're exceeding your ordinance requirements if you want to get into additional requirements.
Becky, if you're worried about circulation, would it make you feel more comfortable if they got rid of like two stalls at the end or something for a little fake turnaround? And you might have to modify-
People are going to park there anyway.
Just throwing it out there, if you wanted a turnaround, they could get rid of a few stalls and make a turnaround.
Right.
If that would, I think that would solve a problem.
That wasn't my, that wasn't like what I came here thinking, oh, we need to turn around. I came here thinking, this is an issue and I don't know if this solves the issue.
Right.
So I personally have seen the issue, I see it weekly. So that's why I am very aware of it and I know people who also deal with this issue as well. So I, I love, I love the idea of more parking stalls because it's like, ooh, maybe that'll solve the issue, but I'm not sure that it will. That's what I'm a little bit concerned about.
And I think one of the reasons, and this is, and I, I agree, I mean, it's a debate on whether you're comfortable with it. I mean, the whole reason we're here is because staff was uncomfortable with the parking counts to begin with. But I can also give you, you know, the, the other side of the coin and the applicant can decide to it is, you know, our ordinances offer the shared use. Granted, you might be uncomfortable in this situation, but from my perspective, the shared use is offered. It's not a mandatory offer, you can deny that offer. But why, why does it exist, is the question? And why it exists is because from a planning perspective, you know, we can require too many stalls. And your value that's coming out of it is putting too much, too many stalls in a place that's unneeded. Somebody has an opportunity to say, "Look, your ordinances are different than my demand." You know, should it be applied to that? It also offers the off-hour option. And what I see is, is that the dance studio is not going to be successful if there's not enough parking for a recital and parents can't drop off their kids. And so regardless of whether you do the shared use example, they will have some problems if they find out that we offer a shared use to them because it, pretend, pretend, for the sake of argument, we offer it, it's there. They can't circulate, it's too jam-packed. The dance studio is going to eventually look for some other place, you know, for it. And what we tried to build into this is, this is the problem with, I mean, for me, the true problem is not this shared parking request. The true problem is, is with how easily flex space gets out of putting in parking. And then after they get more building than parking, then a tenant comes along and that demand goes higher than their initial parking demand. That's the real problem for me from this standpoint. So I look at it and say, if they can meet the shared use and we can get to some comfort for the shared use, the success of the dance studio is entirely the private matter between the dance studio and the landlord. And if it's a lousy design and offer, that'll break apart and they'll have to look for another tenant. So I appreciate, I don't want to say it doesn't cause some congestion. I think the standard dropping off the kids to the recital is going to be an issue here. And so if it's that jam-packed, they're going to have a hard time flowing into that. And either they're going to rent another space for the recitals, which is always feasible, to find a different venue, because they, the function is not working. And so I'm not maybe as worried, and that's why we supported the, the shared use. What we tried to build into is, is this was very specific to the way these uses are laid out. And we were willing to build in a parameter that, hey, this flex use, we have this problem. So if we can stay in a shared scenario, let that shared scenario work through the flex use over time and preserve it rather than just saying, it's this way for this configuration, one time, one time only. But you may disagree, I don't want to talk you into it, I just think we weren't, we were looking at it from another perspective.
And Corey, I, let me state clearly, I, I support shared parking. I think it's a much better way than just over-parking, you know, over-parking lauding, I don't know how you say that.
Paving paradise and putting up a parking lot?
Yes, paving paradise, putting up a parking lot. I support shared parking, I think it's a fabulous idea to utilize space and utilize time. I'm a little bit concerned with the calculation of starting at five o'clock and ending at five o'clock because I don't think that's accurate. I don't think that, that, that the nighttime dance and Kairos and theater thing is going to start at five. I think it's going to start at four, and I think that that overlap is going to cause, I think that causes issues.
Yeah, and that's where I was trying to say, for us, the day uses are not the impact. So we don't think that the four o'clock start time would create the problem.
But the requirement for, so, so what Cassie mentioned is that if, if we can at any one time meet that requirement of ninety, whatever it is.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, Zero Res doesn't use any parking.
But their requirement is, so what I'm saying is-
For seven. But they're not, they're not going to, it's not going to be a conflict for four o'clock, for Zero Res.
I'm just going off of what our requirements are for the, like the uses.
Right, and I, I'm saying, if you wanted to say that you, that's where you want to hang your hat, I agree with you. But when we're talking about a shared use with what's going on here-
Which overlaps, that's my issue.
I don't, I don't think the overlap creates that big of an impact for the daytime users.
What is the bare facility supply? Are they using their sixteen stalls?
They are a janitorial supply retailer. So it's not like people are coming to their store on a hourly or daily basis. I think it's pretty specific.
Okay, and you, and you said the other one's Zero Res and they're not using a lot of their space.
Any other questions for staff? If not, we will invite the applicant to step forward and speak to this matter. If you'll go ahead and introduce yourself to us.
I'm Troy Salmon, I'm filling in for Craig, who is the applicant. But I would, I would just say from everything that's been said that, and Cassie, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're really going from thirty-eight stalls, which is currently there, to ninety-two. So it's a pretty drastic change from the current situation and maybe the problem that you saw. That's, I think that's a big deal. And so, and then I was going to bring up the, the day use. The day use is very minimal with the janitorial and the Zero Res. But that's, that's probably, that's the only thing I really have to add to what everything's been said. Unless you have questions for me.
Any questions?
Yeah, one question that I had, so we talk a lot about putting those additional stalls, or restriping the north side of the building. Would there be either signs on the south side? Because it feels like the south side is kind of the natural entrance, right, to the building? Would there either be signs on that south side or something to indicate that there's more parking up there on the north side?
There, there's not currently anything planned, but we could definitely do that.
Yeah, or the other thought there as well was, you know, encourage the employees to always park on that north side to free up the south side type stuff.
Right.
Anyway.
Sure.
Just some thoughts to try and help improve.
Right.
Some potential pain points.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This matter has been scheduled for a public hearing, so we'll take the opportunity to open a public hearing and invite any member of the public who wishes to step forward and speak to this matter. Yeah, absolutely, come on, introduce yourself, Chris.
Grant Shoup. I know parking in the city generally is, I think, a big question. And so I, I appreciate the, both sides here addressing this. To go from thirty-eight to ninety-plus is a major deal. And I, I, I stand as a citizen with Corey that a dance studio that can't move their vehicles will not be there very long because it's not conducive to their business. And so I think if there is a problem, and I think after ninety-two stalls, I don't know that there would be. But if there is a problem, it mitigates itself by someone moving out because they can't safely move. And, and, you know, kids, our daughters, our sons that are down there, that's our top priority. Totally understand, but, but you're more than doubling what you've got. And the nice thing is that he's able to do that on that property and not push it to someone else's property or to, there's very few businesses over that way. But it, it, I think would help mitigate the issue. And, I mean, if you want to table it, you know, take the opportunity to direct, address it and take pictures for two weeks, if, if that's your concern. But that's the way I see it. And I, I'm a business owner here, we have properties that our parking lots are infiltrated twice a week, in which we can't park in our own parking lot. So I understand the issue. I dealt with it for twenty-three years. And, and so, like I say, to add to ninety-plus, I, I think your problem's going to go away. But that's my personal opinion, thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else present, except for somebody that I, I'm assuming, how old are you?
Eight.
Eight. Do you want to come talk to us today? Nope, all right. Seeing no other adult present, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any, the applicant, you're welcome to come and address the other public comment that was made if you'd like. All right. Any other comments for staff?
Can you tell me, so in the staff report on the, the current parking calculation according to zone or to CZZ code, the ninety-two, can you just go over that one more time, showing us that?
Which one?
If, if the, you know, we're talking about a shared use to nine to five and then a use starting at five, I just want to know what that would look like if we were to calculate the use starting at four o'clock for the dance and performing arts place.
Well, I think in that case it would be the one thirteen, right?
Right. It would just be for that hour?
It would just be everything.
You know, I, so I kind of started out on that side. I think it's important to point out that they probably aren't going to have a recital at four o'clock.
No, and I don't even think the recital, that, I mean, that's one thing to think about quarterly. Remember we talked about that's a quarterly thing?
Yeah, just like with the bridge, we don't want to plan parking lots for Christmas and Easter, you know? Hopefully the recitals are quarterly and hopefully those businesses coordinate with each other for their larger events. Mr. Salmon did also say he has kind of a back-law area of this property that he doesn't really want to put in the money to pave, but during special events could be opened as kind of a spillover lot. So it wouldn't be included in our parking calculations because it wouldn't actually be a true lot. But he did say that he could potentially open that up as a parking area, which would be perfect for things like recitals and stuff that are only happening, you know, once every few months.
We just have to be careful about tacitly approving that because that might be a separate use that's not allowed, parking on a separate parcel, but-
No, is it a separate one?
No, it's our storage area on the back of the property.
Oh.
On this property?
Yeah, it's on the same piece.
But again, it doesn't, as Cassie pointed out, it doesn't meet our code and we don't let anybody else park on dirt, so.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it would not be a part of the true calculation. But if, if the recitals are what you're worried about.
Well, I'll say this, I don't love this plan. I don't, I, I think that there needs to be something better than this. But that being said, I think- But that being said, I think, uh, as was stated before, this would greatly improve the current situation. And if you want to fudge the numbers a little bit and say that, oh, this starts at five, then I guess you'd have the ninety and I guess I could feel persuaded to do it. I don't think it's, I think it's poor planning and I think it's a poor approval personally. I think that, uh, it needs to be addressed from this, from this concept of, oh yeah, there's gonna, you know, obviously if if the if the dance studio doesn't have appropriate passer, then it's gonna go away, of course, I've seen that with multiple things in this exact area. There was the the gym, there were two gyms actually, two tumbling things, there was this dance studio place. I'm sure, I am sure because of this and even approving the parking as it is, I'm sure you're gonna still have turnover, which is unfortunate for the landowner. I think the landowner, if they were thinking through this, would say, if I could just change it just slightly, it would improve the long-term feasibility of people in my, in my, uh, things. But that's not for me to decide, that's for the landowner to decide. So I I probably will approve this even though I think that it's a poor approval and I think it's poor planning.
Just, just to give you credit to the five o'clock issue, I'm still is if if we can write in something that mitigates, I'd prefer, if this goes down to approval, writing in to mitigate it, but I'm just to be honest with you, I'm I'm not seeing the difference at four or five, I I don't understand the concept you're trying to communicate.
Just mainly that a lot of dance studios start exactly at four o'clock.
I wasn't trying to fudge the numbers, I was just going off the applicant's hours that he emailed me. I didn't go back and double check what every business hours were, but he just told me one of them's, two of them are nine to five, the other one are five P M. after, so it wasn't like a, I was trying to con you.
If you want to tie the shared use starting at four, we could do it, but I'm still failing to understand how it changes the parameters of.
Well, just the requirement, the zoning requirement, it says we have to have more parking, which I don't think necessarily we do because it's a, it's a drop-off situation.
If we're dealing with ninety-two stalls, it doesn't change the parking that's available at four or five.
I think what she's trying to say is if you're sharing between four and five, you really are requiring a hundred and thirteen stalls.
Yeah.
I think that's what she's trying to say, is that if you have that overlap of an hour, technically for one hour, you need a hundred and thirteen stalls. But but as we know.
If the, if there's the drop-off though, let's just say if the drop-off.
Like I said, as I.
Then you don't need that many stalls.
So if they're, exactly why I'm saying, I'm probably gonna approve this even though I don't think it's, I don't think it's great.
Because because I agree with you in the flex place and the configuration, this could have been designed and built better for every, for the particular uses that are being stalled into the suites. I I think that's a, I don't, you know, that's obvious.
Right.
You know, whether the tenant lasts there for a long time, can deal with the constraints in the way it's configured, I, you know, I even question at this point for the long haul. But I'm still trying to figure out this four to five because if you calculate it starting at four.
Well, the parents could potentially stay, I mean, they drop off or they could stay.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is I'm gonna come back in as an applicant and show you that zero res and the others don't use all those stalls and therefore my shared numbers just shift. It's the same at five, the same at four, I'm just arguing where the numbers shift. That's all I'm trying to say is is because the demand that's actually occurring between four and five doesn't change.
And I'm just going based on our ordinance.
But that's what I'm trying to say, they're they're picking a shared situation now, we're operating outside of, potentially outside of the ordinance. If those uses don't need that, they're available. That's all I'm trying is we're in a shared situation, so we're crossing over, so you're gonna look at who's in, what's the shared use numbers, what's the demand, because we're not doing things by the required number.
So let me ask.
We're doing things by what's happening on the property.
So let me ask you this, this parking modification is only appropriate or only approved for these five uses in this space?
No, we're trying to build it differently, so you can, that's, I think that's really important to understand, is if you're uncomfortable, you can go to these five specific uses that only last, and as soon as one tenant changes, the shared parking goes off the table. What staff is trying to build into this is that we have the flex space concept. You've granted a shared parking, should it matter whether it's a dance studio, a batting cage or other assembly, as long as you can stay within this parameters, we're still granting you a longer term shared parking. And maybe that's where you're really uncomfortable.
Well, our whole logic is this is used during the day and that's used at night. So let's say hypothetically, suite five goes back to a tumbling thing, which is used at, in the afternoon and evening hours. That would greatly impact.
No, because the tumbling would be counted as the same as a dance studio in the numbers, because it's an assembly count.
Right, so what I'm saying is.
So, but if it goes back to an office, a flex space in an office warehouse, then there'll be plenty of evening parking for the remaining studio and the daytime demand is, does not increase hardly at all.
That's what I'm saying, so this parking is not based on user, it's based on being termed flex space, right?
Well, I wrote it that it would, so based on the fact that there will be painted ninety-two stalls, the tenants' hours of operation, that calculation, all those suites that are in operation at the same time would have to be less than ninety-two. Because I realize that those tenants might change and maybe their hours might change. And so that's why even if you say it counts as four, even though I was, I thought it started at five, then suite four would just be included with suite one and five. So it'd still probably be under ninety-two, does that make sense?
So so Cassie, can I, like, maybe to just like graphically present this a little bit or so I can understand it too? What if all five suites are dance studios and they all require forty stalls? They have to increase their parking, right?
It wouldn't work, yeah. It's completely based on the calculation of their zoning calculated hours and their hours of operation. So the five to nine, the starred, uh, yeah, the five to nine or whatever it is, um, four to nine, if we want to say that, suites two, three and four add up to eighty-nine.
But if that changes, they have to come back, if they, if they're, if they need, suddenly need more than ninety-two stalls, they have to come back and.
Yes, if any of those suites have the same hours of operation at the same time that exceeds ninety-two, then it has to come back to the planning commission or if we receive any formal complaints to city or staff or you guys, then it also has to come back because clearly it's not working.
Okay.
That's what I was asking. Thanks Gina for doing it in a better way.
I don't know what you want, I just, I see what you're saying.
It's been a spirited discussion, any, any further discussion?
Yeah, I just think that as I've thought about this a little bit more, you know, we talked before about circulation and I maybe it's not ideal, but I actually think that by restriping the parking lot like it's proposed to do might help with that kind of pull, drop off and leave type of thing because there's more places for people to pull in, drop off, turn around and get out, right, versus where it is right now, you've got everything that's right up against the building on that south side, the parallel parking on the very south end, which doesn't lend itself well to that type of stuff. Um, and I think this might actually help with that a little bit. Plus, uh, the other stuff I've thought about, kind of along those lines of what we've been talking about just recently with the uses and you know, ninety-two stalls is a lot of stalls and that'll cover a lot of uses. You could almost turn most of this building into all office, not entirely, it doesn't quite work that way, but almost all office and still have enough parking at ninety-two. So we're covering a lot of potential future uses as well, so, and this is one of those things where I think if we do this now, I hope we never see this one again for parking, so.
And I hope that businesses are able to thrive here too.
Yes.
But that's not my choice.
All right, any further discussion or debate? If not, the chair will entertain a motion.
I hereby make a motion for the planning commission to approve the parking modification for the Mission Building located at eight oh three North, twelve fifty West, based on conditions one and through three in the staff report and reasons for action one, two and three.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion or debate? If not, we'll start with Christian Wright.
Aye.
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 And it passes. Thank you very much.
And Chair Heyman, my spirited debate is if our planning commissioner raises a concern, I want it vetted.
You what?
I said when a planning commissioner raises a concern or not good planning, I want it vetted.
I I stand by my, I stand by that.
Okay, moving right along, um, item number five. We're being asked to consider the proposed zoning text amendment to CZC twelve forty-eight, South Main Street overlay, amending front and side yard setbacks in this zone. So I'll turn the time over to staff.
Oh, what a fun report. The, uh, let me give you maybe a perspective before we get to the item. You're certainly aware that the fire department came in and asked for edits for the South Main Street corridor plan. There's been discussions in the past that that, some of the elements that was proved for the fire department were frustrating to to the fire department in the, in the city council. And there's been a substantial amount of discussion, um, over that whole process and 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 what occurred. The item before you is a result of some of those discussions to have very specific edits to the South Main Street plan. But before you discuss those edits, I give you a further understanding that you may or may not be aware of if you followed the city council's agenda. Um, I had a significant work session with them where we pored through, not line by line, but as close as I could, line by line, explaining the concepts again to the city council of what the South Main Street zone meant and intended. The result of that, uh, fun discussion was the city council has on their expectations to have a replacement plan in place by June. So I will be approaching them with an outline, um, uh, in February of how to make that accomplishment and that replacement plan. Part of that is, is, uh, I need the commission involved in in understanding that. And so we'll come up with some strategies to, the commission is participating because ultimately any edits that occur have to go through the commission body as recommending body to any changes to our general plan and our, our zoning ordinance. So I I give that to you to understand that the relevancy for me as a staff of these specific edits are not very high. The relevancy to the city council, they may be fairly high because they directed these edits. I think also these edits play out problems with using a single debated issue, trying to fix it for that single debated issue and not going back to policies on the broad. And so my recommendation that I made, um, may frustrate some folks now or into the future on what's happening. But these specific edits were directed by the city council in response to those discussions about the fire department project. They have two amendments that they're looking at. The first one in gen- in overgeneralization, well, it's like, yeah, I'll go to amendment number two, that's a little easier. Amendment number two is specific to the civic lot type. The current setback range listed for a civic lot type use is fifteen to twenty-five feet. Their specific edit is asking to change that from thirty to fifty feet. That is a result of the requirement that any project that does not meet the setback, but you want a greater setback distance, you can obtain that greater setback distance if you place in a courtyard, a plaza or something of of that nature associated with it. And that is something that they want to eliminate. I did not feel comfortable eliminating that for all lot types within the zone because a lot of our lot types are closer. They're homogenized, they've been a lot different in the past, most of them are ten to fifteen feet. The civic lot is fifteen to twenty-five, they want it to go to thirty to fifty. But as you see in the staff report, we have a general plan policy, uh, that the greatest is fifteen to twenty-five. There is nothing greater than fifteen to twenty-five in our general plan policy. And the edit is asking for something greater than the fifteen to twenty-five. So I cannot support that amendment. I know it's a change that they want, um, but I cannot support that amendment because it is tied to our general plan. And part of our analysis of zoning code is to look to our general plan. So my recommendation to you is even though it was being narrowed to the civic lot and not the other lot types, it is too aggressive in its distance to our general plan. And so I'm recommending that you consider denial of amendment two to change it to the thirty to fifty feet range. The second amendment, um, involves the gap between, so the gap, I keep calling it the gap. The concept is, is that when you have buildings, you'll have some gaps. We're okay with some gaps, we're okay with gaps of fifteen feet. We're not okay with gaps that go, that a fifteen-foot side yard could be added to another fifteen-foot side yard, but we're uncomfortable with gaps occurring greater than fifteen feet. But to to do the gap greater than fifteen feet, you have to install a gathering area or courtyard. So the concept under that design is if, the best place I always point to is Salt, Salt Lake City, Park City, might be in Salt Lake City, but Park City. When you go up Main Street and you got those stairs, those old stairs that go up the hillside, you'll see the gaps where those stairs occur. And in those gaps, what do you always find? The seating area, some type of gathering place that is associated, a small little plaza with that gap going up to those stairs up the hillside. And that's filling in that gap space. And so our code says you need to fill in that gap space, the gathering area or courtyard of some type. Obviously, that's made them uncomfortable and they would like to eliminate that requirement. In the code language here that I suggested to them is that we can fill that gap in with a lot of different other things too. It doesn't have to be just a building or just a courtyard or just a gathering area, that's, that's very pedestrian friendly. You know, the bicycle racks, the seating areas, the signs, directional signs, so forth, you know, kiosks. You know, those are great areas in in some built environments, but that's not the only thing you can fill the gap in. And so I've suggested that if you want to fill it in, rather than eliminate it, let's just add some other features that are part of the design plan. You know, more than something to just you fill it in with a piece of grass. And, uh, you know, one of the things that I think is 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 a little bit identifiable to Centerville, it may not to be to anybody else but my own crazy mind. But you see these short landscape walls, M T C is one that's started it, right out on the front in the corner, they have a nice little landscape area with a wall setback on it. You have, uh, now In-N-Out Burger's got a landscape wall that screens their, their, um, large parking lot on the east side. You have a landscape wall on the Chick-fil-A, you have a landscape wall on the Sonic. You're starting to see, other than just the berms, you start to see some of these walls that are occurring. I think it's interesting, a wall concept that's naturally showing up because the old Parish Lane, what did you see? The street, even though it was a dirt road, you saw the dirt road, shoulders, and then you had the farmer's fence. That made great neighbor for that road, I guess. And so I kind of personally think that there's a unique little subtle character that's occurring in Centerville with these landscape walls. I think it's a perfect idea to fill in the gap rather than necessarily a seating area. And and some, you know, Logan's out here going, yeah, yeah.
No, no, I just, I can't resist, build that wall. I was dying, I had to sit.
Yeah, but but the landscape wall is a short wall. It's a very, very short wall.
Easily jumped.
Easily jumped. So I think there's some other elements and so I added in the other elements rather than worried about elimination because at the time this was coming forward, we did not have this larger discussion about a replacement plan. And so I felt comfortable saying, oh, there's other things we can do in these gaps, it doesn't always have to be the same thing, here we go. And so the, the discussion of that edit, you know, occurred and and you see that staff report favors, uh, the gap edit, uh, for the side yards. So that's our recommendation to you on the coun- council specific edits, is given the circumstances that came at the time that this was developed, amendment one is the gap and staff is supporting the additional language and whatever else. the additional language and whatever else anybody feels could be added into there. Amendment two was to the civic lot, increasing the setback. We believe it's not consistent with the general plan, so our recommendation is to deny it. I think in the long haul from my position to give you my recommendation, if the replacement plan, which seems to have motivation to occur, whether it actually occurs is yet to be debated, these amendments in the end become irrelevant to what goes on. So that's my recommendation to you for what it's worth.
Thanks, Gray. Any questions for staff?
The city council expressed they wanted the replacement to occur and be finished by July?
By June.
By June was the goal?
Get it to them by June.
I like the pace.
Any other questions for staff? If not, um, well, this one comes from the mayor, so I don't.
Well, he's the representative of the city.
We don't really need to ask the applicant then. Let's go ahead and open, this has been scheduled for a public hearing. So we'll go ahead and take this opportunity to open the public hearing and invite any member of the public who wishes to speak to this matter to step forward. I know you introduced yourself before, but if you'll go ahead and introduce yourself again, just for the record.
I haven't changed. I'm Grant Shoup. Could I get one definition? Corey, you talked about civic lot or civic zone. Can you define that for me?
We usually, yeah, I was gonna say, we normally would take all the questions up front and then turn time over to staff. But given that you're the only one here, I am gonna make an exception. Let's go ahead and just, Corey, go ahead and answer the questions.
It's a good question. Civic uses are a specific category under our zoning ordinance that says these are the type of civic uses. So really easy, city hall, post offices, museums, things of that nature are easy to understand. A cultural center, something of that nature is a civic use. The difference is, is the main street has what they call a civic lot type. And a civic lot type is generally designed around civic uses. So the example, city hall, city hall will usually have more greenery around it, so you're gonna have a, a larger setback associated with it. Then if you went to Twenty-Fifth Street in Ogden with a retail shop and you have an entrance every fifty feet, the buildings are closer, really on the sidewalk. And so the main street plan distinguishes between that type of built environment for retail versus that type of built environment for civic uses. The interesting thing about our plan is that you don't have to be in a civic area, if you will, to have a civic use. But if you want to utilize a civic use, then you can choose that lot type, and that lot type's allowed in various places within the corridor. And so you may have a retail building that's out to the street, but you might have a civic use that's setback a distance. The fire department, the current one being constructed, is an example where the O'Brien south half may develop, let's just for the sake of fun, because I'd like to see it, is a brownstone unit, which is Sesame Street. Think of that design. You'll see that those will be closer to the street with the stoop steps going up to it, not shoop steps, stoop steps going up to it, versus the fire department next door, which will have a distance for the apron and some landscaping and the building will speak. So you'll see a slight variation going down the road. But for the different lot types that are used, there's some relationships built, even though the buildings may wander in and out based on the setback.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. I guess I, I, the last city council meeting that I sat in was concerned because I felt like the council just didn't like what the planning and zoning commission sent to them, and they just turned around and sent it back. And so I'm concerned about that. I totally understand the fact that anybody can access both meetings. But I, I guess I also get concerned about is their communication, a lot of, or the right amount of communication between the city council and the planning and zoning, other than you get this back, now deal with it. I, I guess I personally felt like the, the side and setback was a side note to everything that you sent them in December. And it was their way to put it back on you to resolve the whole issue. And of course, you all know why I'm here in trying to facilitate a building and moving forward. And that, that's okay. And, and I appreciate that effort immensely. But the longer we wait, the more I can't do anything. And then the existing building that gets renovated, or not renovated, but when they move out in June, can't be touched for at least another year. That's my concern, another vacancy. But I, I, I felt like at least the city council wanted more definition, more funneling on your December decisions. And because they didn't see that, they just, I felt like picked the sides and setbacks as their first means of, it's going back to you, now deal with it again. So concerned there. I don't know, I don't want to put anybody on the spot by asking how you felt, because that's inappropriate at this point, and wouldn't do that to, to any one of you or to the city council. But I would hope that there is more communication between those two groups than, than maybe what I've seen is not there. And, and if it's there, that's great. I'm appreciative of that. What you do is, is, nobody recognizes it. That's obvious. And so it's appreciated, but I, I, I share those thoughts with you because that's what I felt. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chair, if I may, for the record in the discussion, answer the question. First of all, planners don't feel. Just put that on the record. We have no feelings. That's what the public thinks. We have no feelings. So, um, no, I, I, I want to recognize that it's, it's been an interesting process. And certainly you coming back into the process have entered a place that, that has been wildly interesting, to say the least. Just, just for clarification, so that, you know, nobody's really being thrown under the bus, but I think there are some problems that have occurred that need to be fixed. And I think you're, you're pointing to some of those recognitions. The use list that arrived after the work of the planning commission arrived to the city council, from my perspective, set of feelings, it is a different animal than these edits. These edits that they're debating here tonight are a frustration with the built environment of the new fire station. And I think that is a definitively different place. And so the specific edits of tonight are trying to address some council frustrations that have gone through the process with the approval of the new fire department. The, the frustration is, is it's taken a while to council to wrap their mind around what that frustration is and how it's arriving and how does it affect policy. And, and I think that's been a learning experience for the council. I, I think the planning commission has worked well together with creating land use policy and has a pretty good perspective and handle overall on the land use policy. I think the city council has a very good perspective of how the public responds to them and the demands that the public makes of them as representatives. But they haven't been as artful in the land use deciding processes because they've been taking it on by who is bringing complaint than, rather than taking it on in a holistic approach. Now, that's not to say that they haven't been trying to attempt a holistic approach. They have been trying to attempt a holistic approach for about four years now. And one of the big problems that I see at the council level is it's taking for them a long time to arrive to where they're really going to be committed to a vision. Because they kept hanging on to this main street plan in, in that it's been in place and a lot invested over time, but there's been a lot of dissension in the value of that South Main Street plan. And because there's been dissension in the value, added to component of the fire station being built, added to the component of others that want to have done some changes, it's led them to the frustration about the plan. But they have not been able to wrap their minds around a vision and what needs to be done. And part of that is, is they never really fully, for a long time, understood the nitty gritty details of the form-based code. It's taken several work sessions with them. Planning commission's met with them. Planning commission has shared the frustration with them, that if we don't know what direction you're going, we have a difficult time, I'm taking this for Shay Lynn a little bit, we have a difficult time helping you. So when we're left to just say, like you said, here, go take care of it. We come with something, but if it's not what you want, we're not getting the good, clear direction. And that was why the last work session was held, because of poignant discussions with staff and some council members, that without, with a lack of vision, we can't help you be successful. And that's why this commitment to the June timeframe has occurred. And they have, for, I don't think they fully have a full vision of where they want to go, but I think they have some vision of where they want to go, and it's not this overlay. And so now they want to rectify that and change a new direction. The problem now is, is we have a planning commission that's got to understand what that direction is to some degree in a format. I think the council has an idea of where they want to go. And then it's my side of it is, is how to get these two bodies to at least understand the direction and vision that should go. Because the planning commission is not gonna agree with every little nitty gritty detail. And they might alter some of that, saying, I think it's best to approach it this way and this way. But if the decision is, is we're not going to maintain the form-based code, which seems to be the decision now, what's the replacement? I've offered replacements in the past. They're latching on to some of those ideas. We'll get with the commission to talk about those ideas and see where it actually lands. So I think we have a, 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 a smoky courts glass view of where we want to land in June. Now hopefully we can bring some clarity to the courts and, and see what happens.
And we have a, we have a work session planned with them this month. And, you know, there's some things that we need to do to continue that communication. But you're right, it hasn't been ideal.
We share your frustration. I may have, I may have said a few things at the last hearing very much along those lines.
You should go look at it, Mr. Shoup. It's pretty good. Corey, the, the, the city council tabled the table of uses after the public comment, as they do, because they like to make sure they hear all the public comment and digest that.
And they, they had a second meeting and they tabled it again to February, what's their last meeting in February?
The nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Eighteenth, nineteenth?
They've tabled it again to the nineteenth.
Do you anticipate that they want to make a decision on that even before the June?
I anticipate in their dialogue that the large, that's, that's being too, too cavalier. The longer list sent up by the commission, wouldn't want to call it large.
Will it pare back?
Will get, the issue will be is can we pare it back to some comfortable place? And what is that comfortable place that we can pare it back to while we move forward with the replacement plan?
Okay.
And then the expanded list, or the expanded uses, might fit into that plan and be added. But, but they have yet to decide paring down and what they're comfortable with paring down. But I think it is a, a pare down to, because some, some uses that they are comfortable with regardless of what plan stays in place.
And one of the uses we sent up was limited sales and.
Construction sales service limited.
Okay. So, so, and they could, they could accept that and move forward, it sounds like as soon as February, maybe?
Yeah, they're supposed to just, there was some open room for them to have a few uses added. Whether they convince that, I don't, I don't know.
And that's what you're saying, this is a separate issue. This is, they're, they're responding to the fire department and their kind of stuff. But the table of use that we sent up might still.
It's still, still on the table and, and there, there's potentially some results from that list, new uses being added. But to what extent seems to be the debated part.
Okay, thanks.
We're still technically in the public hearing, so seeing no one else.
Well, my name's Logan Johnson. I live in Centerville, Utah.
So seeing no one else, as a member of the public on the other side of us in the room, we'll go ahead and take the opportunity to close the public hearing. Any further discussion?
God, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering what the right thing to do with this, with this particular motion that we're considering tonight with the approval and denial. Meaning I'm, I'm all for stances and, and messages. But you know, in the, in the light of garnering better relationships with the city council and moving forward, you know, I'm, I'm inclined to, to even just approve both standards and move it forward in the best interest of the city.
You know, I, I struggle with this one a little bit, though, because it's been no secret for about a year now, but the plan, what our plan was to approach the South, South Main Street corridor plan, which was uses first, and then the form next, and then density third, right? That, that hasn't been a secret. It's been out there. We did that in a work session with the planning commi, or the city council here. And so for me, to, to look at this stuff here, feels like we're kind of a little bit putting the cart before the horse. And it's also reactionary. This feels, honestly, and this might sound a little bit, I don't know, like I'm rocking the boat a little bit with the city council. But it feels like this is something that Congress would do reacting to an issue. This is reactionary. This doesn't actually solve the problem. This is, oh, here's this little thing that happened. We're gonna knee jerk react and do something about it. But this doesn't get to the core of it and fix it in a good, good way. I'm a banker. We deal with Dodd-Frank all day long, which was a big time reaction, huge mistake. And this is the Dodd-Frank of South Main Street planning. And so.
Oh, come on, it's not that.
Those are fighting words, my friends.
But listen, no, my point is, my point in saying this is, is I'm inclined to say no to both of them. Why don't we talk about this as a holistic approach, which was been part of our plan altogether? Let's talk about this, but in, in part of our bigger conversation with everything else. You know, and maybe this is part of me being a little bit frustrated. I did go back and watch the, the two city council meetings where they talked about the table of uses. And I was frustrated with, with several things. You know, one, there were four or five people that spoke for it, the, the proposal. One person that spoke against it pretty clearly. And one person who was against density, but kind of blurred some lines there as well. And, you know, I was frustrated with the way that they, they approached it. It seemed like to me the city council was, if they wait long enough, then the mobs with the pitchforks and torches will show up. Well, you know, where, where were they? We, we did a lot of stuff. We listened to a lot of people. Okay, a lot is relative, but we, we had that open for a lot of people. We invited.
We invited a lot.
We invited plenty of people. And we didn't, we didn't get that. That being said, we are for things like this and the permitted uses, the table of uses. We are allowed to listen to the public clamor for these legislative issues. And generally, in my opinion, the public clamor that we heard was that we should do this stuff and we should open that up a little bit. So, you know, I'm not sure what the city council was, was or is doing. I'm frustrated with it for sure. But again, my inclination honestly is to deny them both. And let's address this as our next step in the whole process, which was always defined and always understood, and that was always gonna be our, our plan.
From a gambling man, no matter what we do, they're gonna approve, they're gonna approve this so the fire department can build and go forward.
Well, the fire department's done, right? Like, they're already building their stuff. They're not gonna go back and change the plan.
Well, they don't want a plaza. They just want a drive-out so their trucks.
Yeah, my, my, I've had so many discussions. And what's public and not public is, is I gotta make sure they stay with, within that realm. My understanding is that the fire department is, is fine with their approval. The city council is not fine with some of the elements of that approval. And this is a set of those not fine with the elements of that approval.
And that's exactly what I mean by this is reactionary. This is reactionary to the fire department. Between now and whenever we get done with the next phase of form and whatever else, I'll be really surprised if there's another civic lot use that comes along that we need to address this. So knee jerk reacting on this right now is unnecessary. Let's do this the right way and look at it from top to bottom as a complete project and not piecemeal this thing.
I totally agree with Kevin. And I also think that, you know, whenever we plan in minute situations according to minute requirements, I feel like that is not, it's putting our blinders on and not looking at the whole, the big picture. So doing something like this. So, doing something like this, I mean, I could be, I could be persuaded to approve amendment one and deny amendment two, but, you know, Kevin makes a good point, it's like, why, why should we go about this in a very tunnel vision type of way if we're supposed to be planning this whole situation and we know that we're going to come up to this, this, come up to these issues when we go to the next step anyway? So, I, I agree.
I'm gonna throw a comment out there, because you all know that I'm not shy about speaking my mind, and I find it really hypocritical on the part of the city council, they, we make this plan to say we're gonna eat this elephant a bite at a time, and we do the useless, and we get it up to the city council, and they say, whoa, no, no, we need to look at it in a holistic way, and then they send us back this little piece, right? I mean, it's really, it's ironic because it's exactly the opposite of what they're criticizing us for having done, even though we followed their instruction in doing it. So, I, I mean, I came in prepared to vote in the way that staff has, has recommended, because I kind of, I'm with Kevin, I find it a real non-issue, I really, I do, and frankly, I don't think that the city council is gonna care one way or the other, what we ultimately decide anyway, because I don't know how much stock they put in what we consider, to be perfectly candid. But I, I think that Kevin makes a really, really good point, and I think that if, if the city council wants to tell us that we need to look at this in a holistic way, then I think that they need to do it the same. So, I, I think I do support denying both today for that reason.
I hereby make a motion for the planning commission to recommend following, the following regarding the proposed text amendments to the SMSC overlay district, amendment one, denial of proposed language, amendment two, denial of proposed language.
I'll second.
Do we need to change the suggested reasons for action?
The reasons for action being that we, as a planning commission, feel like the overall plan of addressing these issues in a holistic manner is, is the schedule that we agreed to with the city, with the city council, and something that we'd like to continue in, and that these issues will be addressed at that time, that's verbose.
Second.
Something like that.
Sounds good.
I like it. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or debate?
No, I intend on, or yes, I intend on voting nay, not because I disagree with the, with the comments and the analysis that's been given, but I generally am okay with the first change, even piecemeal. And I, the city council, they have different pressures than us and different things that Shaylin's noticed, or that you've commented on, or chair, chair, or chair has commented on, that they face different pressures and different things than us, but I don't think they're void of good ideas and good intentions in the right direction, and I'd like to say, you know, show a little support in some of that direction, so.
I agree with you on that, but I think that let's bring these good ideas to, yeah, as part of our holistic approach.
I think you just like to be contrary.
Yeah, I mean, that's true.
He'll probably end up voting yes.
I do like what you're saying, Logan, I mean, I think it's a good point.
It is a good point.
I just, I think it's, we do need to look at it from the bigger perspective, do that holistically. I agree with you, I don't see a problem with the first one, but I would like to look at it with everything else, as we said we would do, a bite at a time.
Any further discussion or debate? Right, Commissioner Daley? This is to deny both.
Aye.
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 Nay?
Aye.
Okay. Motion fails.
Well, the motion passes.
Well, if motion passes, the proposed, both of the proposed recommendations fail, thank you, yeah. I, you know, I will make a comment, I mean, we have expressed frustration as a commission, that we feel like we're not on the same page with the city council, and it's, it has certainly created frustration with us. I want to point out that Jamie ever so politically wrote in her comments to the minutes for our last meeting, she described what I said in exactly one sentence, in a very politically correct way, and I appreciate that. I may have been a little less politically correct during the last meeting, you know, but now we have even members of the public who are noticing the same disconnect, and I think that it is, it is creating a problem, it's creating a bottleneck, it's, we are not doing our jobs and the city council is not doing their job and we're not on the same page. So, I think that we need to work really hard, and I am committed to making sure that we, as a planning commission, can be on the same page as, as much as possible with the city council so that we can get things through. So, I certainly do appreciate your comments today, Mr. Shoup, I really appreciate you for sticking around for this long planning commission to offer those opinions, so.
And the several other meetings that you've attended.
Yeah, the most exciting part's coming, though, we're gonna prove our minutes.
Yes. Those are super, super fun. All right, thank you very much. Okay, next up on the agenda is community development director's report. Corey?
I think I gave you a lot already, so the short, the short of this report is, we have two items for your next agenda. I believe Lisa is preparing a chapter for you on the subdivision review, and we also have a, it looks like a final plat for the cottages on the corner on Page's Lane, the Bowling project that's there on the corner is gonna take his final plat through. And so, did anything else come in for the deadlines? I don't think anything came. I believe I probably gave you the council report in advance with the, with the deadline stuff, that's what I know about. I'm trying to think, was there other items on the agenda, Lisa, do you remember that were approved?
So, they approved the Woods Park subdivision amendment, which did not come to you, because it was just, they were amending the plat notes on Woods Park PDO to address the driveway and fencing issues. So, we're glad to have that almost behind us. And Sheffield Downs?
Yes, that's right, Sheffield Downs was on the project and approved the final plat.
Final plat. And, yeah, they tabled your, the table of uses, I think that's it.
So, there was a comment made about, for that Sheffield Downs, about essentially publicizing the demolition of that, is there, you know if they're gonna do that, any plans for that?
Yeah, they agreed, there was a suggestion to Brighton Homes to do that, they indicated that they would do that. They're wrapping up their state permit for the demolition on the asbestos and the air quality stuff, and my understanding is it'd be sometime early this year, if not this month or February, because they wanted to be able to, they're trying to time when they install the water lines and then eventually they want to pave, their goal is to pave everything by spring, so. So, it should be fairly soon, but I haven't heard from Brighton yet.
Tomorrow, isn't there a meeting with the city council to talk about the Island View Park designs? I've seen, I've seen some of those, both of them are very exciting. I'm, I'm looking forward to that. That's great, I actually have a, I'm tied up tomorrow, I'm not gonna be able to make it, so I'm glad that at least one of our members is gonna be there. I'd invite any of the rest of you, or at least look online.
I'm gonna try and be here for at least a minute early, so.
Well, it's an open house, I'm not gonna be here the whole time.
The splash pad one looks really, really neat. I'm really very excited about either, either option. Okay, thanks so much, Corey, appreciate it. Last item on the agenda is to approve our minutes of the planning commission for December 12th, so we'll do this in the usual manner, page by page, if you have comments, let me know, starting with page one. Page two. Page three. Page four. Page five, which so eloquently, seriously, I was very impressed with the way that Shaylin, talking about me, expressed frustration that the council had specifically instructed the commission to move forward on amending the table of uses, but now appeared to have backtracked despite all the effort that had been made, I thought that was a very, that was a very politic way of, of describing what I said. Any comments on that one, is page five? I will entertain a motion.
I hereby make the motion to accept these unamended...
I wanted to do it, I second that.
Seconded, any further discussion or debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.